He graduated in the top 10% of his class. He was accepted to Montclair State University where he pursued a degree in business administration. A volunteer college, Shaheen's brother had started a business that was thriving and soon thereafter, Shaheen made the decision to take a break from college to help his brother and the family business. Shaheen's family business were able to build and grow a transportation company that soon transitioned from losing services to school transportation, which enabled Shaheen to start his own branch of the family's school transportation buses named Mormon Star Transportation, of which he currently serves as owner and CEO. Shaheen is an active member of the Islamic Foundation of New Jersey and also a founder of the New Jersey Health Center, a not-for-profit organization that assists residents, particularly members of the Bangladeshi-American community in the city of Patterson, with all types of social services issues in which he's staffed on a day-to-day operations by educators such as Domenic Chauvin, a past Asian Pacific American Heritage Month honoree. Shaheen began touring the Second War of Poling and listening to his neighbors to ascend, assert him issues to the most concerned of the communities he's part of. And soon thereafter, he declared his candidacy for councilman and ran for campaign focusing on quality life, public safety, and street cleanliness, and also founded the Second War of Clean Streets Initiative, which hires seasonal laborers to clean the streets in the evenings and encourage neighborhood neighbors to take care of their own property to improve curb appeal and neighborhood quality of life. Shaheen was elected councilman for the city of Patterson in the Second War on May 10, 2016, and sworn into office on July 1, 2016, and he continues to be dedicated in funding the New Jersey Health Center and the Second War of Clean Streets Initiative. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of the State that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Shaheen Kalib for the significant contributions he has made, an exemplary service he has devoted to the community, and be it further proclaimed that the Board extends its sincere best wishes to Shaheen Kalib for continued success and service.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you to the Board of Chosen Freeholders for this great honor. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Shaheen Kalib. I'm currently the Second War Councilman in the city of Patterson. I can honestly say that as an immigrant who arrived this country at a young age from Bangladesh, I am living in America. I dedicate this honor to my parents, especially my late father, who always believed in giving back to the community. As my brother and I started our family transportation business, right after that, my father was able to retire. All of the money he would get from his pension and Social Security service, he will be sent that money to Bangladesh to different organizations. They are tired of needs. Giving back to the less fortunate is my father that is here. One day, my family and I do not take lightly. We are making sure those organizations that my father helped in Bangladesh when he was alive continue to get funding, but at the same time, we are extending his legacy in this place in your past. About four years ago, I founded New Jersey Health Center, which is a nonprofit organization that serves the community of social services need. We are also members of various religions and cultural organizations in New Jersey. I totally believe that a human being, you cannot enjoy success if your neighbors is not doing well. That's why I always have community service at forefront of everything that I do in everyday life. Once again, I want to thank the Freeholders, and so I want to thank my Councilman Ali, Councilwoman Adar, and Mr. Abidah for being here, and so a lot of my friends and family who is here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. So moving along and back in order, I wanted to invite my colleague Bruce James. He is in this seat. I had to double check thinking after that. I asked my colleague Bruce James to come down and Councilman Tassina Ahmed to join us at the podium.
Tassina and I are friends outside of politics, so I'm told to do this before you not to add anything to that. Never. Where has the month of May been designated? It is New Jersey Pacific American Heritage Month, in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made in the United States by immigrants from Asia, South Pacific Islands, and descendants. The Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of the State views it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Councilwoman Tassina Ahmed. Whereas Tassina Ahmed was elected Councilwoman of Borough Health in 2014, becoming the first Bangladeshi-American female elected in the United States of America. Do that again. Whereas Tassina Ahmed became involved in politics and community service at the age of 16, when she began volunteering for local campaigns, and she is currently involved in local and national democratic organizations such as the St. County Young Democrats, the Young Democrats of America. Whereas Tassina Ahmed earned a Master's degree in social work at Montclair University in 2016, and recently became a licensed social worker in the state of New Jersey. And during graduate school, she spent two months in Bangladesh interning for a local non-governmental organization assisting individuals living in villages to create a government accountability program. Whereas Tassina enjoys volunteering for local nonprofits and during her undergraduate studies was outreach coordinator for our Bangladeshi-American Youth Association, that's BIDA, and is currently a board member of the Bangladeshi-American Women's Development Initiative based at the St. County. And whereas Tassina has received many awards for community involvement advocacy work, including the 2014 Distinguished Leadership Award for Outstanding Community Service for Montclair State University, the Community Service Award for, thank you, TIAF, and the Woman Excellence Award for Assemblywoman Sumter in 2015, and the Social Justice Award for Montclair University in 2016. Whereas Tassina Ahmed aspires to advocate and work for immigrant families in the United States, and she hopes her work with our bounty in her community will motivate young Bangladeshi and South Asian women to get involved in their communities and make a difference. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of the State that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Tassina Ahmed for the significant contributions she has made and exactly service she has devoted to the community, and be it further proclaimed by the Board extends its sincere best wishes to Tassina Ahmed for her continued success. And I just wanted, I asked her if this was going to hang somewhere, and she said it's going under her bed with all the other stuff that she ever got. Her father's here, so I think we should make the impression.
I don't like speaking in front of large groups of people, so I'm going to keep this really short. Thank you, people, and the rest of the people who have this amazing recognition. Like Freeholder Kalib, this definitely goes out to my parents. I am a daughter of an immigrant, immigrant parents. They've worked literally their butts off to get me where I am today, and I would not be the person I am today without my parents' hard work. So thank you. I didn't become a politician for the title or the recognition or any of that. I did it because it's astonishing that there are a lot of Bengali or Asian-American leaders out there. My goal in life is to encourage and motivate young women of all colors and all faiths to get out there and get involved, especially with everything that's going on. I'm fortunate that I have all these amazing women leaders who have been motivating me and, oh, I can't even speak right now, etc. Thank you to you guys, and one day I hope I can do that for other girls and women in St. County and our communities. Thank you again so much.
So before we move on, I want to acknowledge a couple of the people who are here in the audience today to wish well their friends and their colleagues who already are being recognized. Councilwoman Marissa Davala from the city of Patterson. Earlier we met Mayor Mohammed Karula. I'm joined by two members of his council, Councilman Adar. Thank you very much for being here. I'm not going to recognize the last councilman because that's next. But everyone else who is here, Chief Addy from Prospect Park, and the co-chair of the South Asian American Caucus of the Democratic State Committee here in New Jersey, Dr. Kathy Also my wife and my son, Injitha Wurda. It's my privilege to present this next proclamation, and that is to the most recently elected of our four honorees today, and that's Councilman Anand Shah of Prospect Park. Now, I did not, I did not choose, I did not have the opportunity to deliver this one on because you're dealing with drafty on the program, but it's a nice coincidence. Let's get these backgrounds as well. So let me just get started. Whereas the month of May, you've all heard that part, right? So you know what May is, it's pretty strange. Whereas, Anand Shah grew up in Clifton in an Indian-American household, where he learned the meaning of hard work, discipline, and strong morals, and these acquired traits are what activated his interest and enthusiasm to pursue a career in business and public service. Whereas Anand Shah has been a franchisee of Subway and Papa John's for over 15 years, having become the youngest ever franchisee in the history of Subway when he opened his first Subway store in late 2000. Since his time, his business has grown to own and run over 15 Subway and Papa John's franchises, employing more than 500 residents of northern New Jersey. And whereas Anand Shah and his family have lived in the borough of Prospect Park since 2007, where motivated by a desire to get involved in the community as a way to give back and help this community thrive, he joined the Passaic County Democratic Committee in 2016 and served on the Prospect Park Land Use Board. And whereas Anand Shah was elected as a councilman in Prospect Park in November 2016, becoming the first Indian-American elected to serve on the Borough Council and the first Indian-American councilman in Passaic County as well. And whereas Councilman Anand Shah envisions a bright future for Prospect Park and with his commitment to excellence and his extensive experience in business and public service, Councilman Shah is working to make this vision a reality. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds the honorable Anand Shah, Councilman of the Borough of Prospect Park for the significant contributions he has made and the exemplary service he has devoted to the community, and be it further proclaimed that this Board extends its sincere best wishes to Anand Shah for continued success.
Thank you very much, guys. Good evening, everyone. I'm the Councilman for Prospect Park, Councilman Anand Shah. I hope all of you guys are doing well today. I would like to take this time and thank each and every one of you for attending this event today to share this momentous occasion. I'm thankful for our brave supporting cast of councilmembers under the leadership and guidance from Mayor Karula, which is in attendance for us tonight. Support that allowed me to mold and thrive into a better public service. I would like to also thank Passaic County Freeholders for awarding me with a proclamation in a celebration of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. This proclamation, nothing in Sydney, had not been for the reverence of Prospect Park, my family, my friends, and Prospect Park councilmembers, which are with us tonight, Mayor Karula, and just about anyone that has supported me on my endeavors of being in public office. It has been a true honor to be elected as the first Indian-American councilman in Prospect Park and Passaic County, but as Mayor Mohammed Karula once told me before, being the first or longest-serving elected official means nothing if you cannot deliver good government and services to the people. With that being said, I hope to continue to improve the quality of life in areas of economic development, recreation, and increasing public safety in Prospect Park as well as in the Passaic County community. Thank you once again to all of the here to celebrate this momentous occasion, as well with Freeholder Boardlet for reaching out to be part of the fifth annual Asian Pacific American Heritage Celebration, and to the county freeholders for this proclamation. I hope you all enjoy our evening. Thank you all, God bless.
Thank you. Congratulations, Councilman, and I want to congratulate all the honorees on being recognized. Obviously, as the councilman stated, we have the philosophy that you could be the first of anything, but unless you accomplish something, then you're just a passerby through time, history, and space. So with that, I want to congratulate the councilman again, and I want to congratulate all the honorees, Councilwoman Tassina, Councilman Kalib, and my friend, Commissioner, President of the State Board of Education, Slim Patel. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. I want to thank the Freeholder Board for doing a fantastic job for all of us. You know, we, they work very closely with us, and you know, being here and knowing some of the items on the issue, I urge you to support the soccer field because it's important for many of the communities surrounding the area that you're looking at. Thank you very much. God bless.
So before I hand this off to another history maker, our first Asian-American Freeholder here in Passaic County, I just want to remind everyone who's here, this is probably why you came, but there's a buffet dinner in the atrium of the county building right after the program. Go down and enjoy that. That is from the Joti Exotic Indian Cuisine Restaurant on Route 46 in Wayne. So supporting local business and filling your stomach with some good Indian buffet food, which when it's lunchtime closes a night, so for dinner should be just perfect for everyone. Stick around and enjoy. It's been my pleasure over the last several months to serve on this board with Asad Ahter, who as I said is a history maker on his own right, and I'm going to let him join me here and introduce our fourth and final honoree, who I think that the fourth is the longest-serving in elected office, so he'll join us.
Thank you so much, everybody. You came here to, for all our honorees, you know, when we do these kinds of programs, it's great not only to see those who we honor and their family, but so many people come out to support them because really, when it comes to service, you know, when you're working, you're out there doing stuff, you don't know what's going to happen to you or your attention, so that's why we do programs for non-freeholders, to give some of the citizens and some of our public service intentionally serving. My good friend, Slim Patel, is one of those folks, and also I wanted to have his father here, who's been a community leader for a long time in Passaic. Whereas the month of May has been designated Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, in recognition of outstanding achievements and contributions made in the United States by immigrants from Asia and Pacific Islands and descendants, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic views it fitting and appropriate for time to honor and recognize Commissioner Slim Patel of the State Board of Education. Whereas Slim Patel's family, who moved to India, is serving his third term upon the office. The president serves as President of the State Board of Education, who oversees a $300 million budget in the six largest school districts in New Jersey. During his tenure on board, the city of Passaic has committed $200 million in new schools, and the city is expected to invest approximately $500 million in new school projects by 2020 on. And whereas Slim Patel has a corporate finance background, keeps it up to date on business perspective, and looks up at numerous initiatives, the students he serves, his future goals include establishing relationships with corporations, establishing data, as well as identifying key federal and state grants for the school system. And whereas Slim Patel has instrumental limitations of district-wide school uniform policy, helping to be issued with a little bit of pressure and data. And whereas Slim Patel oversaw a $30 million investment IT infrastructure resulting in deployment of Chrome laptop books for all seventh through twelfth grade students. And whereas Slim Patel is a 2010-2011 Fellow of University of Southern California's American Willson Pacific Leadership Institute, and is the founder of SLY, a nonprofit organization focused on social services, with a food pantry to liberate food security for families across New Jersey. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Slim Patel for the significant contribution he has made and the exemplary service he has devoted to the community, and be it further proclaimed by this Board extends its sincere best wishes to Slim Patel for his continued success. You know, he gives credit for recognizing his work for the school board, and he should be, but what he's done with SLY and how many people he's helped, that is the true essence of service and charity and the humbleness about what he does. He doesn't promote it out there in terms of promoting himself, promoting what's good about their position, and I do thank you all for our support.
Thank you, everyone. So I don't have any formal remarks prepared, but I want to begin by thanking the entire Freeholder Board, Freeholder Director Sandy Lozera, Deputy Director Bruce James, whom I consider close friends and have been mentors. I remember first running for office and reaching out to Freeholder Bruce James for some waffles. And he'll always tease me for that because I always have waffles, whatever. But I really appreciate him taking the time from the get-go and then continuing on and getting to meet and know personally many of the other Freeholders, Freeholder Duffy, Freeholder Lekor, Freeholder TJ Best, for everything that he's done in terms of guidance, mentorship, it's always appreciated. And I don't want to forget Freeholder John Bartlett, who is a tremendous, tremendous advocate for so many communities, and it's always an honor to see him and how passionately advocates for those communities that need voices amplified. And it's truly an honor to have gotten this award today from Passaic, our legacy maker here in Passaic County. I think he's made history across the nation, he's made a history here, especially here at home in Passaic County, representing our communities here in Passaic County, Freeholder Asad Ahter, and who's also doing a tremendous job on the Freeholder Board. With that said, I was reading that Asian American History Month was first a week, and it was inaugurated back in 1978, which is the year I was born, so I don't take credit for that, but, you know, it shows my age, and, but what I've realized is that it's gone from a week to a month. We're recognizing the contributions of so many that have gone before us, a number of years, now 38 years that this tradition has gone on, and it's something where we're recognizing the talents and the contributions and the sacrifices that so many have made. And we talk about everyone that has gone before me, that has mentioned their parents or being immigrants, and what it means to kind of live the American dream. And what everyone here is doing is allowing a recognition, a moment for us to reflect that this is something that we share, a common fabric, that we all share across all communities of sort of coming into society, making your mark in terms of how we can make our collective society better, that it's not just one voice, but many voices that really come together to make it a beautiful tapestry, a beautiful collection of moments that we can then give back. And what I've noticed is the common thread is all of us have a commitment to service, and we're all serving those that are less fortunate or those that may be helped, and you know, whether it's here or it's even abroad, but we have that sort of sense of purpose collectively, and it's really appreciated and it's an honor to be here at this moment and sharing it with such esteemed people that went and were recognized before myself. And it's not just the people that have been recognized, but the shoulders that we stand on. It isn't like our Dr. Kathy Joshi, and we stand on her shoulder, and so many others that have come before us, including my father, who stands here to my right, who served on the Board of Education, where they're from. So I really just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for everyone that has helped contribute towards not only this, but for us to get where we are, to where we are, where we have gotten and where we continue to go, as Mayor Mohammed Karula has said, that it's not about just being the first, but it's about what you have done and the opportunities that you've given, and hopefully you take, you make the most of it. Thank you all. Thank you all.
It's not always the normal turnout for these kinds of special events. We've often had more honorees than we have today. So the turnout really is amazing. It shows you the depth that people feel about these individuals. I want to thank, I really want to thank Freeholder John Bartlett, who took the lead on this. You know, John set me up real well. I'm appreciative of the history with my swearing in as being the first Asian American Freeholder here in Passaic County, the second in the state of New Jersey, which I missed by, I think, about two weeks by being the first. But that's fine. But actually, it's funny, because you know, some people claim that Barack Obama wasn't the first black president, it was Bill Clinton. And some people tell me that John Bartlett was the first South Asian Freeholder in Passaic County. And I'll take that, he's an honorary South Asian, so we give him our applause. But I did want to say, you know, that all the honorees mentioned their parents. And that's really, that's really what, you know, I can really relate, obviously. I think most of the honorees here were like me, who grew up here, were born here, like I was, whose parents came here. And most of them, or almost all of them, came with relatively little, some lucky enough to be educated, some others not so much, they had to make do with what they had, and they didn't complain. That's something about our parents' generation, they didn't really complain. They just kept working and working for us. And with everything happening nationally, with all the talk about immigration and immigrants and all that other nonsense out there, I could never be more proud than I am today to be the son of an immigrant. And I know that's the way the honorees feel. More than ever, you know, our identity, there are those in this country who think that in order to be American, you need to separate yourself from your identity. Somehow, you need to become something more, you know, analogous, something different. And I reject that entirely, I don't, the Freeholder Board rejects that entirely, and this county as a whole rejects that, because this is really, this is the best of America, is that said. And the people we honor here today, it wouldn't have been possible if we didn't live in a nation that welcomed so many people from so many different shores, and gave them far more opportunity than they had here, than they had far more opportunity here than they had back home. And that's a fact. And so I love this country, and I love what we've done to bring some of my families here. And I'm so grateful, and grateful to be honoring all these people here. So thank you all for being here, and thank you for, please go down and enjoy the buffet.
I'd like to welcome Deputy Administrator Matt Jordan to come up.
Freeholders and Mr. Administrator, thank you for the opportunity to present this exciting new project to enhance the visitor experience of Passaic County. As you know, last year, the Board issued a request for proposals for a graphic identity and messaging plan to implement the heritage tourism development in Passaic County Master Plan. The RFP's goal was to repeatedly consult and develop, one, a comprehensive strategy to promote the highlight historic sites, open space, recreation facilities, and other destinations within Passaic County, and, two, to continue growing the tourism industry in Passaic County. Ultimately, Merge, the decision by Lieutenant, was selected as a successful bidder, and work began in earnest last October to execute the goal of the RFP. According to the New Jersey Tourism Initiative, Passaic County saw the greatest percentage of growth in tourism economy in 2015, experiencing nearly 10% growth in one year to $569 million, with a 12% surge in hotel room revenue and strong increases in restaurant and hotel sales. This project is not only a tool to make the visitor experience of Passaic County easier, but an economic development strategy that will continue to create jobs and grow the tourism industry. Over the last six months, a steering committee was formed with staff from the administration, engineering, historic and cultural affairs, roads, parks, and planning departments to work with Merge to develop a brand new Passaic County. Additionally, two public input sessions were developed within Passaic County Community College campuses, in rural Bonneville and state of Passaic, to solicit public input for residents of Passaic County. Tonight's presentation represents a comprehensive design and marketing strategy to bring your Passaic County park system and many tourism assets to the next level, to continue the growth of Passaic County's tourism industry. Now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Glenn Swantak, Merge, to speak in more detail about the project.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Passaic County Freeholders. My name is Glenn Swantak, I'm a principal at Merge. We are a design and planning firm, and we specialize in doing wayfinding programs, not just in New Jersey, but also around the country. Wayfinding is nothing new to Passaic County. You have it, it's just not organized, and it's not branded, it needs an identity. So the slide that you see on the screen here, it shows all of the different types of signs that you have, you know, from pedestrian signs to downtown wayfinding signs in Patterson, to the park signs. And really what we wanted to do with a comprehensive design and plan system, just to organize that information and present Passaic County in a friendly and organized way. We started this program in October, and one of the first steps is we really want to outline what are the types of signs and wayfinding tools that we're talking about. So generically, we start to outline, are we looking at gateways, pedestrian signs in the complex here? What does the signage look like in each of the jurisdictions all throughout the county? So we start to look at all of these signs. The park system has a great design already, which we're going to be building upon, the gateway entry signs into the park. So that system will continue to just evolve throughout the interior of all its park systems. So the first phase of this project, we're dealing with the parks, and this is an outlier of Garrett Mountain, where you can see that you already have identification signs. But these are some of the major destinations and secondary destinations that a visitor and also the community need to be aware of that's inside the park. The next, the second phase of the project is also in the courthouse complex area here. So that will mostly be dealing with vehicular signs directing people to this complex, and then also, you know, pedestrian signs that get people, once they park their car, to the different buildings that they would need to get to. So we're not just designing the signs, what they look like, but we're also locating where they go, what they say. So that's the programming and planning of the project as well. We're looking at this, though, holistically. We are looking at this as an entire countywide program, even though the first phase is only in those two particular regions and those two sections, this is a design that can be implemented for the entire county. So we are, as we're planning it, thinking about it holistically. And the concept of it is that Passaic County is the primary header message, and then the identification of each of the municipalities within Passaic County is on an equal level. So you'll see that represented in the design. There is opportunity for different characteristics, depending on which municipality you're traveling through, to create some identity. So we presented three design concepts, and then the one design concept that everyone seemed to gravitate towards was the industrial history of the region, whether that's, you know, the railroad, but also the manufacturing component of it. So this is translated through the graphics, the materials, like quick work, using IDMs as the post for the sign. So this was the final design that we came up with. So even on the backside of the signs, you have opportunity for graphics. Currently, we have a rendering of Hamilton on the back there, because of the relationship to the county, but there is an opportunity there to have some variation on that idea. We looked at the, you know, "Rich History, Bright Future," you know, tagline that you already have, so we're sort of, we want to build upon that as well, but still keep those materials as industrial, using a traditional color scheme with the red brick of the panel as well. So the header on the top says Passaic County, on the back of the sign, it'll say what city, what municipality you're traveling through. These are for higher speed roadways, so they're double posts, higher font size and messages. All of these panels are reflective, so they're easily read from a car during the day, and then also at night, when they have reflected. We have to follow the Main Urban Uniform Traffic Control for any vehicular sign types when it comes to that. So different sign sizes, a single message, double message, or three messages. I think you'll start to see, we dropped them into some photo renderings to see how that would start to look in the environment. We're also directing to parking, using an international fifty gram that is consistent to direct to, especially like jewelry parking in this area here, getting people to the right parking garage. I think it's really important when you're dealing with multiple courthouses and buildings. So you can see how that would start to look. So you can see how that parking P just stands out, and as soon as you see that down the roadway, you'll know to go to that parking garage. And then pedestrian signage, whether that's in a downtown, or in a pedestrian zone or area here. So directing to the buildings. And then having kiosks that have maps and information in the complex. There's also an opportunity to tell the story of Passaic County through interpretive information and signage. So we're using the same materials that ID, the exposed bolts, the color scheme carried throughout all these, through these different items, but they all have different messages. In this case, you can really get into the history of a site, or of a town, or of anything, really. You can start to tell the story of Passaic County. You can see how these kiosks start to work. And then the identification of buildings. So it's really important to have consistent identification, you know, that it has Passaic County on top. We switched out the logo on the top to the county seal, so if it's an official, you know, county building or a city building, you want to make sure that it has that header switched out, and it's just an official look to it there. And then the parks, taking that existing design that you already have and just carrying it through to every single sign type that we could think of and have programmed. So parking areas, identification signs of recreation, trailheads, directional signs, interpretive signs. So it really has the look of a uniform system. And then we also start to look at gateways into the county. So every arrival point that somebody comes from, by car, there's different sizes and different speeds that people are traveling, whether that's through a downtown area, or whether that's off of the highway. You'll start to see how that will start to look, whether that's a monument, or a two-post sign that's in one of the DOT's red light, or even coming into a county. So that's where we are right now, we've just completed the design portion of the project. Our next steps are, we're documenting the project, so we're getting all of the design details, the colors, the, you know, the sign sizes, so that we can create a bid document, so that at least for the first phase as well, that you'll be able to go out and take competitive bidding and get that made. And our goal is to complete that in June. Then the bidding phase, planning and permitting part of it, but we're hoping to get some fabrication started at the end of the summer, August, September, and the first phase of the first phase of the project. When we document, we will document the entire project, so all of the sign types that you saw, you have a document, so that if you wanted to implement subsequent phases, you could, based off of that document. That's it, thank you.
Do you really think I would add, as Glenn said, our JR pavements in the first phase of the Garrett Mountain renovation, directly there, we did that for the tourism, sort of, our high-volume areas down, each year build on a system of that. And then the last thing I would add is, we've already made the offer to all the municipalities that they want to build that wayfinding signs. There are municipalities with destinations that maybe don't have the previous capabilities that they can take, the drawings that Merge has developed, so it's another add to that municipality. Do you have any questions?
There's a couple of questions. First of all, great job on this. One thing that I did notice that was missing there was our tagline, "Rich History, Bright Future." I don't see that indicated on any of the signings. Do you plan on putting that back, or are we going to keep it off? From a, you can put taglines on signs in certain areas, in certain spots. From a vehicular standpoint, you're not allowed to have taglines, like on the vehicular signs that I was showing that have arrows, basically, that are directed. That's code that you're not supposed to have. You're not allowed to have websites or taglines and things like that, the DOT doesn't allow that. We do have the opportunity to incorporate that into maybe gateways, or, you know, things like that. Pedestrian signs in kiosks, for sure, you could do that, because it's not a, you know, requirement by the NTC. We, I don't know why we don't have that in there now, but I think along the way, when we had our student community, I think that was one thing that we just decided that we weren't going to have in there, we decided not to. But if we wanted to, we could investigate in the gateways and then on the kiosks of the program. Yeah, there's something I would add, I'd like to say in front.
Well, what about the backside of the signs? Do you have the logo there?
Yeah, you mean the tagline, or the...
Yeah, the tagline.
Yeah, no, even on the backs of the signs, you can't. But we can, when you saw that Hamilton image on the back, and then it has the name of the city, that image, and we'll start working through that, we do have some preliminary ideas for some other images to put on the backs of those, you know, whether that's a building, or another historical figure, you know, or nature, you know, we can put that on there.
Yeah, the idea would be to, Hamilton fits for Patterson, because, founded Patterson, there would be, you know, have an image representative of that municipality. there would be, you know, have an image representative of that municipality. Or a lobby act. Having seen, you know, seen people. Remember that as anyway?
I would also suggest, and I know that you had some steering committee meetings, but talking to the municipalities to find out who they would prefer to have. We all love Hamilton, I know Hamilton's a big hit on Broadway and everything, but if I had my choice, I would probably pick Larry Doby over Hamilton. And I'm sure you probably find a lot of Patterson residents who would probably pick that too, especially in certain locations. So I'm thinking, for example, when you enter the Say County from, I was thinking more so, a Broadway off of Blue Floor from, what county is that?
Bergen County.
So when you come in, when you come in from Bergen County, you have East Side Park, which is right there, and there's a wonderful, beautiful monument that I think the city might paint over of Larry Doby, which is great, but, you know, to have it there since there is a ball field right there to have someone have Larry Doby. Or around Hitchens Stadium, around the National Park again, we know that Hamilton, you know, founded the city based on the falls, but again, Hitchens Stadium, one of only three remaining major league stadiums in the country, is pretty significant in its own right, especially the fact that Larry Doby had his trials there and so forth. So just to consider some things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
And also just last question, from a funding standpoint, we do have corridor enhancement dollars from, that we get, and we expanded our corridor enhancement program. So even though I know that we're looking specifically at doing courthouse and Garrett Mountain, I think those major corridors where you enter into the county, if we were to possibly utilizing some of our corridor enhancement dollars, because in some cases, they've just been sitting there accumulating for years and years and years, and I would like to see a permanent structure put there on the way side, line side when we enter into the county. So I think we could probably do that simultaneously, just do my timing into that, whatever it is.
Yeah, absolutely. Hamilton's just the example that we use, is that it would be, it's a passively, it's a celebration. We're looking for the, I'm trying to figure out what is your story based on, what are the intriguing characters or monuments or buildings or sites?
Was there, it was skewed to me whether historical, Say County, Say County stories or?
Okay.
And back, how many, in planning, have you figured out how many phases it would take, like under your projection to?
We have, we definitely have.
Yeah, I can serve the basis, we find more funding than we would have seen so.
I can say that, you know, we've done projects where it's very piecemeal, we've done a project in Savannah, Georgia where they, they will implement maybe one or two signs at a time, which is not the ideal way to do it. You like to do it in larger chunks so that you can make an impact. So, you know, we've sort of started at this phase one and we're sort of dubbing it a pilot program because it's a good way for us to test, you know, how things will work and how it gets done.
Do we have a, do we have a count on the county signs we currently have?
Uh, yeah, we do have a trust solution for traffic in here, you know, it's not just out there, we're going to be worrying then in some cases pull back those signs, you know, some gateways in the Say County.
I have a little question, I was curious, when you go down to county, different municipalities have the signs for Morse Canal that are passed through different areas. Is this part of the program, they want to try to put signs, you know, make them all the same?
Yeah, I think that the Morse Canal is a, is a separate program that's done through a number of different counties that has their standard. If we, if there is overlap with what we're doing, we would definitely want to make sure that it's not, you know, sign clutter, we want to make sure that it's, it works with it. If we had to, if we, one thing we could do, if it's not there now, it would direct to maybe, you know, the entry points to a trailhead or things like that.
Yeah, those are more markers.
See, some of them are a little different, so they're not directing you to.
No, I know, I know, but we're just giving you information.
Briefly about sending the opportunity to our municipalities to add their destination on the sign. I think that's something that we should really, as a design, be a reason to put our signs in more places and it's going to be, you know, a service that it provides for the municipalities. In your experience, what are the ways, what are the effective ways for a county to encourage that kind of participation and, you know, when and how do you want to extend this to our municipalities?
I think, I think one of the major incentives is that, you know, if you hired, you know, ten different design firms and ten different planning firms to do design for each of the, of the different towns, basically, we're doing all of that before they, before them down. So they're, they're saving money on those design planning fees. That's an incentive for them to participate. We will provide opportunity for kiosks, pedestrian signs, and also on the backs of their signs to incorporate some of their local history or, you know, ideas on there as well. And just to be, and as you can market the county as a whole, you sort of get, it's more powerful than marketing as an individual. You can direct, you can get a further reach to your, to municipalities. So if that is a participation, we will, this county will.
I will say, and our two Republicans, let's actually use the big participation factor. I've already sent one letter, once we finalize the signs, we'll, 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 we'll share.
I want to just, I have the staff that worked on this, it's been a lot of hours and a lot of time, but I think we're heading in the right direction. It's really exciting because we are trying to, say, counting, I think that the statistics that Matt talked about and tourism, you know, are pretty impressive. Two weeks ago at our conference, the New Jersey Tourism was there, they want to come up, have a meeting with us to see exactly what we're doing, why those numbers are what they are. So, you know, clearly people are sitting up here taking notice. It's an exciting time, you know, with the commodity and the design, the sign is, is sharp.
Yeah, I think it's a testament to the board in the full site and the minimal hours on investment in our state county system that we're trying to, helping the municipality to pretend that those haven't recently, obviously, have an impact and help keep the Say County. I'm concerned now, I can't, I'm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director, that concludes my 30-minute review of the report.
Uh, Director, we do have, we have several private stores and then two, it would have to be a man. The first late store will be R-38, which is a resolution authorizing 31 vehicles to turn over to body shops. These vehicles have been sitting in Classic, in some cases, the world of months. So there was, there was an auction the other day with General Fellers, and Sheriff wanting his request and permission to turn the titles over to the body shops, in this case Classic. So that would be K-38. K-39, Director, the resolution, you requested changing the previously noted next week meeting from Tuesday, on the 13th, to Monday, to 12:00, State County, Safety Academy. At that time, you, you were, and suggested that there's a, on the 13th, so this resolution provides otherwise, to advertise that change. My quarters with public hearing? Public hearing is advertised at 5:00 PM on, on late noon, 12:00. This conference meeting will be 5:30, advertised 5:30, and the regular meeting will be advertised at 6:00 PM. The last late store we're requesting is a resolution for changer of number one for Lightning Industries. You'll notice on your agenda tonight, item number 11, changer of number two. Due to some errors, number one did not get listed correctly. Now, obviously, we need to do number one for you for number two, so we're asking that number one, if we want to go this far, that would be K-40.
Yes, that's it also.
We're asking also that changer of number four and five, which is items 16 and 17 on your agenda tonight be amended. There was a slight mistake on number four, the engineering department called into our attention, they made a mistake on the fourth. So obviously, we were asking that that be amended, and number five would have to be amended as well, because the number is wrong. So we would ask that those two items replace 16 and 17 under agenda for tonight's meeting. That's what I had.
Okay, you can, I have to take a personal question. Is Josie here?
I'm chosen.
Oh, Josie.
We do have another blast that we want to, to another minute. This is Louie's last meeting as a single man. He ran, he ran for a lot of years, but he finally was pulled.
Can I have an announcement to adjourn? James and Duffy, both on?
Freeholders Hopter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazzara.
Yes. So we're going to move on to our regular agenda, and I need the announcement of the open public meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, location, including the annual notice adopted, reorganization being filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with provisions of the law.
Throwback?
Freeholders Hopter?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Here.
Best?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
LaFour?
Here.
Deputy Director James?
Here.
Director Lazzara?
Yes.
Thank you. O God, who provides for thy power, people thy thy power, and rules over them in love, be gracious enough so to bless thy servants, our freeholders, in the county of this day, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through all the work. Amen.
Please join me in the sweet and bright flag of the United States, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the power of the fortunate hands, one nation, one God, and who is the sole, the liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to spend a moment of silence, to remember that we are armed forces, but very importantly, we're also very dear, trying to probably, basically, our form of prosecution, which is being, you know, and it's stressful, so just to have in our heart and our minds.
You also wasn't on next floor.
Oh, Charles.
Dollar, July Andy.
Yes. Thank you.
Freeholders, gratitude.
Thank you.
Move this.
We're in board.
Freeholders Hopter?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lazzara?
Yes. And we're off the days to freehold of the people.
Director, if I could, today the public administration releases a fiscal 20 to budget proposals, different than what they put out a few weeks ago or months ago, which was a, just a short snapshot, they put out, they have a full budget document, and like we suspected, it basically eliminates, eliminates 66 different programs, and the entire bulk of it really are programs that help working class Americans, Americans who have disabilities or, and people who have income insecurity back in our country. And it upsets me, as we pointed out before, they continue to launch the low-level programs, including the community development grant program, the home investment partnership program, a number of other programs, including grants for public defenders and other things that do not help our justice system. The one that is, especially in ISO, and I thought we'll continue to talk about, is the elimination of the Will program that serves 1,200 seniors here in the Say County, and they continue to want it eliminated, and in replacement for that, they offered up. And all these, all these cuts don't go towards defensing, they don't really go towards tax reform, they go towards more defense spending, more military spending, and a sharp increase in military spending. And, you know, this is upsetting, obviously, there are many reasons why it's upsetting, but I do want to point out for the folks here and for the folks of the Say County, all this will mean is, is that the burden, if even if it was passed this way and burden was lifted from the federal government to fund these necessary programs, the burden would just be put on counties, like our county, and localities. And if you want property tax, this is the exact opposite of that. Because either we're going to leave our seniors who have no other way to, to get a, even we're going to leave them, we're going to leave them in the past and allow them to suffer in silence, and I don't even want to know the consequences of what that will be, which by the way, will also entail societal costs and economic costs. But the fact is, we'll have to pick up the bill, and the people here in New Jersey will have to pick up the bill, and we're already paying a more than amount in property taxes, estate taxes. So when, when they put out these budget proposals and look to just a bunch of numbers and a bunch of programs, I hope people look at the whole human impact and the whole societal impact that it'll have on all of us.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, because we look at Medicaid, that will be devastating, the state of the territory, particularly devastated with our health care system and our hospitals. We're down to the new hospitals, what they have to have, with that medical, they're supposed to, millions and millions of more people are not having any kind of medical access, which puts a stress on, on facilities like St. Joe's, St. Mary's, and my little lots of life. So I was trying to, to this budget, our foreign region and freeholder, I don't know that we can deal with. You know, we, we are, we're in dire straits, the percent cap is very limited, and what we can do, try to, it's all, the laws are halt, they're hazards, they're, they're, be honest with anybody who saw it, so, and Bill is right, it's only military spending, not anything, a club budget, Bill is shifting spending to military and public people.
Correct, my suggestion?
The law is very important.
Did we draft some sort of letter saying, you know, saying just that to public, public citizens? Let the people know that.
Freeholder, at your request, I sent an email to departments today, asking them to take a look at the proposed 66 programs. Obviously, it's, you know, short on detail, so it's a little bit difficult, but I did ask them to prepare memo for, out from my office, that obviously, share and incorporate that, what it exactly would mean. There are a lot of things, one of the things that never seems to get talked about was Medicaid expansion, what's that meant for caring for inmates in county jails?
a look at the proposed 66 programs. Obviously, it's, you know, short on detail, so it's a little bit difficult, but I did ask them to prepare memo for my office that obviously share and incorporate that what it exactly would mean. There are a lot of things. One of the things that never seems to get talked about was Medicaid expansion, what that meant for caring for inmates in county jails, whereas the taxpayers used to have to pick up part of that cost. Now inmates are covered on Medicaid, which is then the saving for them. And I've yet to hear anybody publicly talk about the benefits of that. It's not just the St. Mary's County, it's 21 counties and the state correctional facilities. You'd think that our government would recognize that, but, you know, it hasn't either. But that is, when you talk about, Freeload, I mentioned it, you talk about property tax relief, it is just a competition.
Unfortunately, something to bear bone does not seem to be a bar to get voted on in Congress to be counted. They voted on the American Healthcare Act, which affects one sixth of the U.S. economy without the Democratic Party voting for it. I absolutely agree with Freeload, colleagues, and all of this. And my folks who are concerned about public policy, that between now and our next freeholder meeting is the next opportunity to go out and vote. As our primary election, it's a district review. The registration deadline has a full room at 6:00 AM in the EPM, and we have contested primaries in both parties to govern the council of which.
If you have the information on our department, you really can add it to the definition of the vote. If you have a special, uh, terminal access, we all can discuss it. We open this panel, we call it the one, the package, the, 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 the public, the large, maybe everyone available, what the possibilities are, which kind of tax that you're proposing for the public. I think that certainly, uh, it's more of a concern with the public.
And one of the other areas too, is our, as you said, that's a lot of the, the SNAP program. You're just not ready to do it for yourself. If you're getting, you know, if you get $8 worth of food stamps, you don't have to worry about food stamps. You have to put in your capable body. These people are a layoff, they get fined on it. So it's not, you know, the welfare of the people. It's people I do a duty, you know. For that, you need to put in a food stamps, you have to put in 80 hours of working, like people. The problem that we have is you can't be, it's worthless. These people find a job, it's like, they give you 80 hours of work. You can't go up and, because you want to get your hundred bucks. I don't know what that would sound to me like, you know. But, uh, so you have to pay for your diet, Medicaid, you just can't fly. I didn't even think about that. So we just have to.
And I've yet to see other than people on this day, any other elected official talking about that.
Well, I was never sure.
Over the communications?
Yes.
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lozera?
Yes. I'd open up the world for.
Good evening. Out of Dells, this is 134 Buffalo Avenue, Paterson, New Jersey. I'm here this evening to actually commend the freeholders about a certain project that I've been reading about in the papers. It's the artificial turf project that is proposed to go at Gofford Park. As a former coach and a person that's very involved in athletics throughout the county and New Jersey, this is a long time coming for our county, especially for the kids and that, and the towns that have doing recreation programs. The artificial turf project that you guys are proposing is something that's going to enhance more recreation opportunities for our, especially the kids in the Hudson, throughout the county. Nowadays, this is the way to go when it comes to fields throughout New Jersey. For example, the majority of high school fields that currently our athletes are playing on are artificial turf. Days where it's raining in the morning, and it's raining all day, and the kids are in school, and it stops raining at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, our kids could be out on those fields with the artificial turf that you guys are proposing at Gofford Park. Many counties have gone this route. If you look at our neighboring counties in Essex County, Brookdale Park, they have numerous artificial turf for their residents. I know many of St. Mary's County residents that go over there, and that will look forward to stay in county closer to home to utilize the fields that the county is proposing. And another reason why I'm very for this project is this is going to help us reduce costs with artificial turf. On a rainy day or a bad soccer game, where the kids or the adults who are usually choosing to choose up the field, the parks department has to go back right on there and sod it, put the seams down, reline it, and that may occur if you use someone else around the county who wants to put the artificial turf down at Gofford Park. I think this is a long time coming. I also hope that this freeholder board will continue to expand more fields for our kids, because any kid that has opportunity to go play in that park takes a kid off the street and gives them an opportunity to stay out of trouble. Thank you, and I commend you, the freeholder board, for taking this vision and going away with it. And any questions or anything that you guys may have, or any help, I'm there standing behind you guys. Thank you again.
I'm C. Shebeck, 341 Creek, Paterson. I'm going to speak out against the proposal for this disc golf installation at the Garrett Mountain. I look at it from a global level. Parks are supposed to be areas that are protected from development, areas that are to remain as pristine as possible. I feel that by installing this facility will degrade the biosphere, the ecological system of that park. I've seen parks in Africa and in the Amazon that are areas that are supposed to be protected, but they're really paper parks because corporations and governments continue to plunder and extract the resources in a way that is compromising of the future health of this planet and the health of species, not only ourselves, but of animal species. So I'm really asking that this proposal not come to fruition when it could be spent better elsewhere. That's it.
Thank you.
My Chinet Vision, nine courts lane, Paterson, New Jersey. Just say please use this grant money for charity for many, there are many needy and worthy causes in our areas, which would thank the great use of this money. I just heard this talk about wheels on wheels, all these, there's so much better use for this $20,000, you have to agree with that. Come on. You know, I have nothing against the golf course, nothing against disc golf course, but not in Rifle Camp Park. You know, it wasn't even publicized that well. You had 900, over 900 people signing petition, and there would have been a lot more if they knew about it, against it. You know, these are the same people who voted for you, okay? And trusted that you would do something good in their own backyard. You are their chosen freeholders. Also, I understand that volunteers will be doing the actual building on the disc course. You know, where are their credentials? What about liability? What happens if someone gets hurt on the job? Rifle Camp Park is basically hidden away, and that is the main reason why it is so lovely. No one will know that the disc golf course is even there. I also read in the invoice for services that there's going to be $12,400 for just the architectural planning of this, and instead it proposed nine holes, and now it's up to 18 holes. It should be located in a more visible space, like a college campus or a golf course. I've been in elementary, 33 years in elementary teacher in Clifton. I know what it's, I understand it's recreation, children, really fresh air, I get that. But not here. This place is beautiful, because I've talked to people in Bergen County and other areas, there's no place like Rifle Camp Park. There's, you know, it's purity, there's nothing there. Why can't we just keep that? Keep it like that? Why do you want to put this? I don't have anything against this golf course, but not in Rifle Camp Park. Thank you. Please reconsider this. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Vera Lazar. I'm from Clifton, a member of friends of Garrett Mountain and on the Clifton Environmental Commission. You all know who I am by now. At the last few meetings, I've spoken about the disc golf course and cited the many reasons why Rifle Camp Park is not the appropriate location. I would also like to say a few words tonight of how this reflects the overall agenda of the Parks Department to push and promote strictly active recreation in the lower St. County parks. There are many, there are plenty of municipal parks, as well as county parks, Gothelbrook and Weaselbrook, which provide opportunity for sports. Garrett Mountain Reservation and Rifle Camp Park are the only natural areas in lower St. Mary's County, and it is important for them to remain in their natural state. One, they provide critical bird and wildlife habitat, and two, they offer county residents the opportunity for passive recreation, such as hiking, nature walking, and nature study in a serene environment, and these activities also have many health benefits. I'd also like to say this evening a few words on another particularly damaging proposal. County Parks is seeking to develop a small pond at Rifle Camp Park for an ice skating rink, complete with benches and other amenities. I'm appalled that the county would even consider such an idea. This is a natural spring-fed pond surrounded by native wetland shrubs and vegetation. It provides habitat for birds, butterflies, and other species, and the great blue heron is found there year-round. Although ice skating is a winter activity, the benches and other amenities would require the removal of important vegetation. Benches will also encourage year-round activity, which will be highly detrimental. In addition to the ecological reasons, I must say it's a very inappropriate location for ice skating. It's a spring-fed pond which rarely freezes safely, and the access trail becomes extremely icy in the winter. I'm not against ice skating, in fact, I like the idea, but I think the county should restore ice skating at Garrett Mountain Reservation. Where's past the field in front of the boat house was flooded to make a rink, it was shallow, safe, access would be easy, the benches and tables are already there, and there would be no disturbance to important wildlife habitat. So why doesn't county parks seek to restore that opportunity rather than destroy a natural ecosystem at Rifle Camp Park? This is just another example of the Parks Department disregard for the environment and for the people of lower St. Mary's County. And lastly, I would like to say just a few words on the removal of the wood debris. Woody debris is a natural and vital part of a forest ecosystem, and it presents no safety hazard, and I would like to know why the county is paying such a large sum of money to have this removed. Thank you.
Hi. Mary Flynn, 18 Green Court, Clifton. Horizon's, the Horizon Foundation mission states that it will support organizations who provide for a healthier New Jersey. I fail to see where disc golf will provide for a healthier New Jersey. There is been an Oprah request for the grant application, and today is the seventh full business day. I would think I would have heard something by now. I am interested in seeing that grant application because I would like to know how the county represented or misrepresented to the Horizon Foundation that this disc golf is going to promote a healthier New Jersey. I sent each of you an email two weeks ago suggesting that if revenue is the issue here, there are very many different ways that we can produce revenue through passive recreation. Really, that's all I have to say. I hope that you have read my email and read the different ways that we can do this besides disc golf, and that we can be cost-effective with likely effective. And face the facts, you know, you could put disc golfers in a parking lot and use poles to hold the receptacles, and they would be perfectly happy. Thank you.
My name is Diane Connor from 76 Washington Avenue, Clifton, New Jersey. I'm a biologist. I work primarily with birds and mammals, and I've been here before. The last episode of the freeholders' meeting, we had the course designer talk about how one of the things that they were going to do was go in and remove hollow trees. And the little handout that I gave you is actually about the Indiana bat, which is an endangered species, because a lot of people just talk about birds, I'm going to talk about bats today. That's a federally and state-listed animal. And also, you're probably aware, or maybe not, of white-nosed disease that's affecting the black, old black populations. In the summertime and the spring, these animals come out of hibernation, and they usually have their caves, and in the summer, they roost in, under the bark and in empty tree cavities. And in the handout, you'll see on the first page there, it talks about the importance of tree cavity, dead and dying trees, certain lists of species, and again, you know, we talked about last time, that there's been no certain wildlife surveys or anything with regards to mammals or trees or anything else like that. Now, over in Bergen County, I have some pictures that I'll give you. This is, these are pictures of how they do things over there at the nature center in Bergen County. They have, they've got all the trees on the map, and they also label the tree cavities and tell you what animal could live in the tree cavities. This, the name of the park is, it's the Miffl Environmental Center. And I think if you guys went over there and saw, see how they do things over there, I think it would be a great thing. So I wanted to just, you know, I talked a lot about animals and about wildlife and things like that, but I also want to mention, in the 80s, 1990s, I was vice president of the St. Mary's County Young Democrats. I helped bring that organization back. I was elected county committee person. I worked on Democratic campaigns for 10 years. I was a driver in President Clinton's bordercade. I was on Hillary Clinton's health care express bus trip. I've been to the White House. Gloria was there, we were always down there in, at Trump Flackett. If this was going on now, I would just resign, because you guys, you know, it's like you are on the one side of this issue. It's like you are, you're, we're Democrats for a reason, and a lot of it has to do environmentalism, and some of it Bergen's issues, and everybody's got their reason, but, you know, I haven't been involved because I don't have the time. I'm sorry, but I just want to tell you, you're alienating the base and deterring the base. Now, over in Bergen County, I have some pictures that I'll give you. This is, these are pictures of how they do things over there at the Nature Center in Bergen County. They have, they've got all the trees on the map, and they also label the tree cavities and tell you what animal could live in the tree cavities. This, the name of the park is, it's the Mifau Environmental Center. And I think if you guys went over there and saw, see how they do things over there, I think it would be a great thing. So I wanted to just, you know, I talked a lot about animals and about wildlife and things like that, but I also want to mention, in the, in the eighties, nineteen nineties, I was vice president of the State County Young Democrats, I helped bring that organization back. I was elected a county committee person, I worked on Democratic campaigns for ten years, I was a driver in President Clinton's bordercade, I was on Hillary Clinton's healthcare express bus trip, I've been to the White House, Gloria was there, we were always down there, in, at Trump Flackett. If this was going on now, I would just resign, because you guys, you know, it's like you are on the one side of this issue. It's like you are, you're, we're Democrats for a reason, and a lot of it has to do environmentalism, and some of it Bergen's issues, and everybody's got their reason, but, you know, I haven't been involved, because I don't have the time, I'm sorry, but I just want to tell you, you're elevating the base and deterring the debate.
Karen Shankerberg, Two-Six-A, Washington Avenue, Clifton, New Jersey. Could you note the signage you saw there? I'd like to see signage for the National Natural Landmark, the Garrett Mountain and Rifle Camp Park, put aside, and also for the IBA Important Bird Area. Any of those signs? I'm asking you once again, end this motion, make a motion to end the pursuit of disc golf courses in Rifle Camp Park because of those, the IBA and MNL, which should never have been considered in the first place. Too much open air is going on. Regarding this issue, no proper public notice within a reasonable timeframe, no forms, as required by Green Acres and county statutes, no clearly outlined procedure in regard to implementation of your plan. You've only invited your own staff and hired consultants to promote your plan, and the disc golf course in particular. Not inviting opposing viewpoints to present PowerPoints and other demonstrations is a mistake. Gossiping dialogue and feedback to those individuals who may cherry-packed is also a mistake. Only letting the public speak for three minutes with no opportunity for dialogue is a mistake. I have to wonder how you sleep at night, honestly. Where's the transparency and simple common courtesy that Passaic County taxpayers, residents, and constituents deserve? For all of our life, you knew about this disc golf course proposal back when it began in 2016, so why did the public only get word of it now? Mr. DeRosa, I saw your tweet dismissing a few voices of the public who managed to find out about the disc golf course plan, and who managed to actually make it to one of these meetings. Of course, there were only a few individuals present, because our elected officials did not have the decency and courtesy to bother to provide the public with any public notice at all, thus suppressing public knowledge and public comment on a very important issue. And just to add, Gothel Brook in Hawthorne is getting an amendment to its master plan for its historic aspects, likewise Rifle Camp Park and Garrett Mountain Reservation within Garrett Mountain IBA. Should also have an amendment outlining the proper care for its order bond IBA to protect it for future generations. I still do not understand how your agenda to deforest one county park and cover another one in artificial turf, very expensive artificial turf that makes children sick and has to be replaced on a regular basis, which is going to cost taxpayers a lot of money, fixes. But within the Democratic platform, that charges you to protect our environment, are the Democrats or Dinos, Democrats in name only, stop forcing deforestation and overdevelopment and million-dollar artificial turf down the public's throat? You are elevating your base indeed.
Freeholders, Otter, Bartlet, Best, Duffey, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar. Director, if I may, we have our Parks Director here, they're going to address Resolution Number Seven, which was mentioned by a few members of the public, and exactly what the intent of the resolution is. Go ahead, Mr. DeRosa. Dr. Lazar, why don't you go?
Yes. We also want to add that the artificial turf, although it is not top, it's not the base of ground of tires, it's pork.
And the artificial turf is not top, so it's going to be...
Exactly, that would make sure that there's a requirement in this area.
Darrell Squarter, thank you.
All right, so, Item Number Seven is a, was a part of our 2017 open space trust fund budget. It is the same principle as what we did at Garrett Mountain several years ago, it's just to clean up previous years' work of storm damage in the highly visible portions of this park along the roadways and the trails. The big packet, which included a map of the trails that we are addressing, that makes no reference to the disc golf course, it has nothing to do with the disc golf courses, the red and yellow trail, or red and yellow trail, I'm sorry. And basically, like I said, it's just been done to clean up those highly visible areas, and it's a normal maintenance procedure that we will continue to do in the future in Garrett Mountain, Rifle Camp, and any of the other parks and camps that we're going to do.
Darrell, could you also talk a little bit about trail maintenance, what we've done downtown in the trails, or the course, if you'll ask?
So, trail maintenance typically done, our department works with the Trail Conference. Anytime that there's an issue involving a trail, whether it be out in County, downtown County, we do group clean checks on our trails, so a lot of the information we get comes from the Trail Conference, and our staff goes out and clear those areas. So typically, what we do is we'll go out and we'll just clear paths to get rid in the short term and then longer term, every couple of years, when, once it becomes a big enough project to be out, we're going and moving those areas a little bit further back from the trail itself, and that's what this is addressing in Rifle Camp this year, as it did in Garrett Mountain.
How many phases did we do at Garrett Mountain? Three, four phases?
Garrett Mountain was done in two phases.
So we can assume, let me ask you this question, that trees are not being knocked down for, for, for disc golf course, correct?
Yes, this has not been...
There are no trees being knocked down for that reason by people on purpose. So this is just regular maintenance?
Regular maintenance, in fact, this was planned prior to the thought of the disc golf course, it was something that was on the slate, happened this year, I was talking about two years ago.
We started at Garrett, after I'd been through a little war, the opponents of clearing some of the green, Garrett, and we went on to go to other parks, and we'll continue to do that as an ongoing maintenance initiative. Whether or not this golf is part of Rifle Camp Park or not, this will continue to happen, given what there is with disc golf, or the dog park, or playgrounds, or the amphitheaters, but back to, this will be an ongoing maintenance initiative.
Correct, and we actually, at Rifle Camp, we kind of condensed work zone, we needed a smaller parameter and larger diameter, minimum of the market diameter that we're going to take out at Garrett Mountain, we actually took out a six inches, Garrett Mountain, Rifle Camp, we changed eight inches, so we tried to, you know, we learned a little bit on where we're going to get at Garrett Mountain, we're trying to minimize the impact, but yet we need to measure the public's spot damage.
And to put something in perspective, when I got here, the operating cost for parks was $50,000. That's what parks had to maintain, all of the parks throughout the State Council. Today, we have, what, that number of, over a million dollars? Because we understand that if you're going to invest in parks, you have to maintain parks, which is part of what we're doing here. So people are, of course, entitled to their opinions, but they're not entitled to the facts, as they... This is something we'll continue to do, we will continue to do, we spent a lot of money last year saving the ash trees, we were successful for the most part, maybe one or two that we couldn't save, but not for lack of trying. So, just to put that in perspective, when you think about $75,000 to maintain the county park system that the State County has versus what we're doing today, because the investments were bringing to the park.
If I'm right, Tony, I think, Pat, we were always, we maintained you, and so we made some, hey, what, we need to present the park system, we go full on park, and you came off to work, and I'm proud of the park system, I think we've come a long, long way, you know, we...
Sir?
Certainly have, yes.
It's, well, the commitment that this board makes to improve the parks, to bring people into the parks, over passive and active recreation. Rifle Camp Park is not slated as only a passive park, I know that's what you think it is, but it is not. It's not what the original design was, there's a hop sledding course there, there's an amphitheater course, there was a, a, an exercise course that was there. Unfortunately, prior boards neglected Rifle Camp Park, and that's why it became what it became. But this board has taken the initiative to improve our parks. You may not like disc golf, I may not like disc golf, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't improve the parks.
Dear Director, I can't just, a little, just to know the work, the fact that I've been with Duffy myself, instrumental in the tree clearing project that took place a couple of years ago at Garrett, Garrett Mountain. It actually started back in Gothel Brook, and Freeholder Duffy actually spent time with a forester, one of the workers. Exactly, to learn about, you know, how to, how to help keep a forest healthy, the things they need to do that the average person doesn't think of, unless you're in the business, you really don't understand what's going on. But at Garrett Mountain, it called attention to me that one day when I saw dozens of buses pull up, and they used Garrett Mountain, surrounding high schools, used Garrett Mountain for trackings, and we're talking hundreds, hundreds of students utilizing the trails through Garrett Mountain, if you've been up there, I'm sure you've seen them. And we had that first round of storms that just knocked trees down left and right, it welched our attention, that we had some trees that really shouldn't be standing, especially when you've got hundreds of students working their way through. I mean, I think it was Passaic last week, a little freak storm come along, a little, you know, a little wind gust comes along, picks a tree down, and it ruins a mother's day for her, you can kill somebody. Trees need to be respected, and they also need to be taken care of, and sometimes you have to take trees down that pose a threat to the general public. I don't agree, certainly not an expert, but I don't agree with one of the speakers' contention that trees, that all should be left there, I disagree on that, I think they should be cleared, I think they help the forest space, they help the underbrush, when we pull these things up, that's my own opinion, I could be wrong on it, but I've spoken to people through the last few years that have tried to educate me on this, when I raised questions and answered my questions, and these are some of the things that they came up with. So, even though you're focused and, you know, and fully respect your position and respect your passion, there's just a couple of things that I think are a little exceptional with, the fact that was mentioned a few times by some of the speakers, that we tried to sneak this through, you know, tried to backdoor, not make it public. You good folks have been here at least three times, maybe four, maybe more, so the fact that people don't know what's going on is not accurate. People know what's going on, it's been reported in the press, I think one of you good folks talked about, nine hundred people signed an online petition, so people are aware of what's going on here. And again, with all due respect to what you'd like to see Rifle Camp be, Rifle Camp Park sits, Passaic County is a county with over 500,000 people, more than three-quarters of that population lives within 10 miles of Garrett Mountain, Rifle Camp Park. And I think we should do everything that we possibly can to enhance the recreational opportunity here, whether it's bird watching, whether it's hiking, whether it's just hanging out and count the squirrels, whatever it is that makes you happy here, we should do whatever we can to address the needs of three-quarters of a half a million people who use these two parks every weekend, every, good weather, bad weather, they use these parks. So, as passionate as you are to protect what you perceive the park should be, we have a responsibility as tree holders to provide recreational opportunities, passive and active, to the extent of the plan. Mr. DeRosa talked about, we've increased the budget for maintenance, and I, you know, I intend to continue increasing the budget for maintenance. I want to make our parks a showcase, I want people to talk about the State County parks. So please don't focus on just one aspect that you think exceptionally, there's so much more in the park. And once again, I appreciate your passion, I appreciate the resolve to come here, meeting after meeting, and state your case, but listen to what we have to do, please, because we don't need your likes, because it's also important. Thank you for the time.
I'd just like to add, we do truly understand your passion, but when you come up to the belief, and you malign, and you challenge the integrity of this board and the staff who works at Passaic County, it gets nothing accomplished. We are willing to talk to you, we follow the guidelines as far as the three-minute rule, if you want answers, our phone numbers are available to you, and we are more than willing to work with you. And that's why we get things done, because we do work together, and we do work for what we feel and we hope is the best for the county.
And if it's interesting, for the record, there was one, one lady that came up about the Oprah request, did she say? Thank you, but for the record, tomorrow is the seventh day, not today. Okay?
Mary Flynn.
Fair. Can I just, again, the facts to be the facts, not what somebody perceives.
Okay, can I have a motion to close a couple of portions?
It's a little...
Oh, we did that earlier, I'm sorry. Okay, we can move on to the resolutions, first I need a motion to accept the late starters and the changers. James and Best. Girl call?
Freeholders, Otter, Bartlet, Best, Duffey, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Do you have a motion to accept the consent agenda, K-1 through K-40? James and...
Thank you. Otter.
Girl call?
Freeholders, Otter, Bartlet, Best, Duffey, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. New business?
Capital ordinance, 2017-08, capital ordinance of the County of Passaic, New Jersey authorizes the renovation of Passaic County Courthouse Annex in by end for the county appropriating there, therefore, the sum of $3,700,000, and providing for such sum so appropriated shall be raised from general capital fund balance of the county.
Do you have a motion to approve capital ordinance, 2017-08, on first view?
Thank you.
Do you have a feeling, LaFour?
If I could, Director, just so people are aware what this actually is, so this will authorize us to spend capital surplus, we won't incur any additional debt, this is actually cash that will go towards the project. Freeholders, Otter, Bartlet, Best, Duffey, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Do you have a motion to protest them?
Thank you.
James and Duffey, Girl call?
Oh, LaFour.
LaFour, I'm sorry.
Freeholders, Otter, Bartlet, Best, Duffey, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Can I have a motion to move the bill list? James and LaFour.
Freeholders, Otter, Bartlet, Best, Duffey, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Do you have a motion to certify the peril?
Thank you. Freeholders, Otter, Bartlet, Best, Duffey, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Are we in the State Department of Records?
Received and followed.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
What are you doing?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that even though she's not here right now, I just texted her that she's going to be in a lot of trouble for not being here, that it's Josie's last week. Josie is our phenomenal office assistant here in the County of Passaic, she's worked with us for about five years, she's getting married and moving to Oklahoma. So we just wanted to wish her, you know, Godspeed and all the wonder and joy of being married, and all the things that you're going to have out there in exciting Oklahoma, a lot of fun out there, yeah, yeah. So we'll still be here six months from now, she was crazy wants to come back to the county, so, God bless, and I love your condition. God bless and I love you.
Freeholders, Otter, Bartlet, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
I'm Korean-Canadian, actually, but I live in the great country of America. Asians rock this month, all other months as well, but particularly this month.
Hi, I'm Steve Aoki. I'm Japanese-American. I grew up in Yvora Beach, white-bred American. I've only been in two fights in my life and they were both racially motivated.
My name's Steve Chen. I'm one of the co-founders of YouTube, uh, and I'm a Taiwanese-American.
I'm Lisa Ling. I'm Chinese-American and I'm a journalist.
Rena Miwako Wheaton. I am half-Japanese and half-African-American.
My name's Hong Nguyen. I am an Asian-American and proud of it.
I'm Kal Penn. I guess the, the question was about what it means to be Asian-American.
I'm seen as a marginally potent vehicle of destruction, yet at the same time, I'm seen as not being able to speak English. Being Asian-American means that I'm smart and I'm intelligent and I'm hardworking, yet it also means that I'm not a leader and that I can't lead other people.
I've always seen myself and considered myself American before any other subset of ethnicity or gender or anything else. But you realize that that's not necessarily how everyone else feels.
You know, I was born and raised in New York City, but inevitably, in New York, you're always asked, often by vendors, often by cab drivers, so where are you from? And I go, well, I'm from here. And they're like, no, 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 where are you really from? And I'm like, I'm, I was born and raised in New York City and I live here now. I could not be more from anywhere else.
Our culture is, is in partially invisible to people. I think it's important for us to actually, to voice our opinions and to produce and create things that, that people can be part of.
I've always felt that if people were to see my face on television, in films, in magazines, that it was a political statement.
I want to make a difference in our industry. As an Asian-American chef, the majority of people still think that we cook, you know, tapanyaki or sushi.
Being Chinese-American affects me every second of every day, pretty much, from being cheap, bringing lunch instead of buying lunch every day, using tofu containers to put my, you know, to put my sponges in, but also just, you know, Asian stuff in general. I think by the time you get to third generation, you start to check out other cultures of people who eat rice.
My mother has conveyed to me the Japanese culture. So when I went with her to Japan, I had an affinity for the country, the culture, the people. It was a very strange feeling because I'd never been there before, but I felt almost like I was at home.
Well, I feel very proud to be Asian-American and my kids also feel very proud.
I'm a very proud American.
I'm proud to be an Asian-American.
Proud because of all the achievements that our forbear, forbearers were able to make in a country that was often very hostile to them.
I'm George Dekay. I'm a Japanese-American, grew up behind the barbed wire fences of US internment camps. What I remember is my father. He said, "Both the strength and the weakness of American democracy is in the fact that it's a true people's democracy." And it can be as great as a people can be, but it can also be as fallible as people are.
My grandparents came from Japan and worked in the plantations of Hawaii, and today I'm a United States Senator. There was a time when there were three Asian-American United States Senators. Today, there's only one. It's an important job. Join up.
I think it's important that we celebrate, um, Asian-ness because, uh, the, the whole region in Asia is starting to develop in such a rapid way.
We're very fortunate to be living at a time when we can really combine these two great cultures, the Asian wisdom of perseverance, of humility, at the same time, the, what I, I found to be great about being immersed in, in the Western culture, in the Western school system, uh, the freedom to be able to escape from, uh, to sort of walk the, the path that's less trodden.
So I think it's a great time to be an Asian-American. I feel like we have far to go, yet at the same time, we have very high heights to climb. And it's only something that's going to happen with our participation, with our commitment and with our passion. And with all of us working together, I think we can get there.
Hello, I'm Vishaka Desai, president of the Asia Society. I'm proud to be an Indian-American and an Asian-American. No matter what part of Asia you come from, from India or Pakistan, from Vietnam or the Philippines, from China or Japan, I invite you to share your stories about what it means to be an Asian-American. All you have to do is to click the post a video response link below. Thank you.